All right. Good evening, everyone, to a warm and toasty evening here in council, which explains why some of us are in more casual attire, since the air conditioning is not working, and so it's not on, so there you go. But the meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated January 8th, 2018, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If you need, if anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
And in addition, tonight, there's a zoning board meeting that's upstairs, so if anyone here is for the zoning board, you should go upstairs to the Whitman Room. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Mr. Gould?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. McTiernan?
Here.
Ms. Ogden?
Here.
President Naidoo?
Here.
I would like to now ask Amon McTiernan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting, as authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on Hometown TV, Comcast 36, and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone, so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at rlicatice@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, can I have a, on the minutes for approval, do I hear a motion for approval for the minutes of regular and closed session of February 6th, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any knows? Any abstentions? I'll abstain. Before we move on to reports, I would like us to take a moment of silence for the children and adults who were tragically gunned down in Parkland, Florida. Our thoughts and our prayers, obviously, are with their friends and families, and our love is with them as well. So if you could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Now, for reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Can you hear me? Is this on? Yes. Okay, good evening. The City of Summit is hosting a community meeting on Wednesday, March 7th, at 7:00 PM at St. Teresa Vavel Memorial Hall at 306 Morris Avenue. The members of the community are invited to participate in this redevelopment workshop meeting to learn about the area between Broad Street and Morris Avenue and Maple Street, an area that has been designated as an area in need of redevelopment by the planning board. Participants will be able to share ideas for specific uses and improvements for the redevelopment area, express architectural design preferences, and review proposed materials. In addition to the public workshop meeting, the city will provide an opportunity for interested citizens to communicate feedback online beginning March 7th. For more information, please go to cityofsummit.org/redevelopment. At tonight's meeting, thank you, Council President, to give us an opportunity to share a moment of silence. And I think the moment of silence is important, and I applaud the students who are asking their adults in their world to discuss gun control, or sensible gun control. Anyway, it is vitally important that our children feel safe in our schools, and school security is a very high priority for our police department. So I would like to invite Chief Robert Weck to come up and just share some information about Summit's school security protocols.
Thank you, and I echo your comments of the horrific events that took place last week. So just to give a little bit of background of what we do, and obviously, I'm not going to give the playbook of everything that we do for school security, but after Columbine, we created an active shooter response team, which was just a small group of day officers that trained just for that. It's come a long way since there, and now under Lieutenant Proctor and Detective Sergeant Peters. They train all the time, all the officers in the Summit Police Department, in the schools. We are really lucky in Summit. We have a very good relationship with the Board of Education, also the school admin and the staff, so we continually train in the schools, which is where you want to train. Practice like you play, play like you practice. So we've done that through the goodwill of the mayor and council. We've also equipped all our cars with heavy-duty vests, long guns, Kevlar helmets, so the officers are prepared when they arrive. So we continue to train in the hopes that we never have to use what we've trained. And I remember Dr. Parker used to always say, you know, "Chief, you take this part," because I really don't like saying it, and unfortunately, our main goal to train the staff, the students, or officers is to minimize casualties. And that's through training and being prepared and things like that, so that's our job, is to minimize that. We were also one of the first schools Lieutenant Proctor trained the whole district with ALICE, which is alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate, so it's not just the lockdown where you're just sitting in a corner now, there's other options, and that's what it's about. I've always told my kids, who are now in college, when they were little, "If you need to get out, get out." I mean, it's a whole policy in the school, to their credit, has done a phenomenal job training the staff with our officers. We also have, you'll hear the word SRO a lot now, School Resource Officers, and that is usually one officer, it's usually in the high school. Florida High School had an SRO, there was, what, 3,000 students? He was on the other side. I'm sure he has to live with that, so that's a little tough. Columbine had two SRO officers, so what we've, I think all the schools, and we've offered it to the private, just like the public, but right now, we just do the public. So if you're in Area 2, you have Franklin and Brayton, you will stop in that school at one point, and while our officers have access with key cards to get in, the locked doors, they will push the button, because they also want to train with the secretaries and the admin staff of looking to see who it is letting them in, and then they just walk the hall. So they get the layout, and we always joke, you know, walk the school, and, you know, one day, you know, press yourself, try to get to the gym as quick as you can. It might be for a broken leg, but just figure out what path is going to be best. If you're in a room with a lot of books, obviously, you're in the library, you need to, you know, keep doing it. So the officers are always kind of challenging themselves, the quickest way to get to a school. Again, it might be for medical aid, it might be for a suspicious person, or a violent act. The other one that we've done is, I think, a testament to the good work that the city and the police department and the Board of Ed has done, is after last week's tragic event, we only, the superintendent and I only got two emails, and they both, we were CC'd, and the mayor was CC'd on one of them. It was really more to kind of commend all the proactive training that we've been doing in the schools. I'm sure there's some communities where the parents are, you know, a little more concerned, not knowing what their schools and police departments are doing. So I think that is a solid testament that they, the parents know, because they see us. Sergeant Peters is also our juvenile officer, he's always in the schools, building those relationships with the students and staff. And the last thing is, obviously, if you see something, say something. While there are reports of these mass shootings, there's a lot of great stories where a grandmother, or a best friend, or a parent, has turned in their child, or their friend, or what have you, because they just saw something, heard something that wasn't right, and they stepped up, because it's really sad to then think later, "I should have. I should have said something." And obviously, Florida is a little different, because there were a lot of signs there, but, you know, we have to worry about Summit right here, so I always ask the parents, "You see something? You know, don't be afraid not to be that parent. Say something." I think you'll be able to sleep a little solid at night, knowing that you did the right thing. So, and I'm always, I know a lot of people will contact the mayor, council, which is great, I always get the information, but my information, contact information's online. If you have any question, if you're a parent, resident, business owner, what have you, let us know. And just on a side note, if you have a high school parent, you received the alerts today that there was a canine sweep. Superintendent Chang brought that, this is the third or fourth one. Before Summit did it last year, it hadn't been done in Union County in 10 years. Westfield was the last one to do it. And I think, again, it's a testament that we're being proactive, looking for other things, and also, the resources are there. So I applaud him on that, and the parents and the staff and the students as well, for everything, so. But contact me, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to call you or email.
Thank you, Chief. And just to clarify, the officers, when they are in the schools, that's every day the school's in session?
Correct.
They stop by at different times of day?
And it could be at any time, so there's really not a time where, like, the officer, the car may be there, that may be unmarked. We have day officers that are always in the school, so there's always continuous presence.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Just a few more brief things. The Summit Police Department is accepting applications for its Summer Police Youth Academy for boys and girls ages 11 to 14, and the application period begins March 12th. This year, the department will be running two one-week sessions, July 23rd to the 27th and July 30th to August 3rd. Again, go to the city's website, cityofsummit.org, to download an application. The deadline for the Lewis Bay Future Municipal Leaders Scholarship is March 9th, 2018. If you have not already heard about it, three $1,000 scholarships are available for high school juniors and seniors through the New Jersey State League of Municipalities. Applications are available on the city's website. The next Meet the Mayor event is on Saturday, February 24th, from 1:30 to 3:00, at Best Sellers on 23 Summit Avenue. And lastly, I would like to wish a very Happy Chinese New Year to all who celebrate this year, the Year of the Dog. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. And now, on to Michael Rogers for the City Administrator's Report. Michael?
Thank you, Council President. First, I'd like to apologize to Councilmember Little. For everyone, she's here next to me, in case you can't see her, but just a little obstruction in here, in case you.
[laughter]
But cooling the room was, took a priority over sight vision, anyhow. Good evening. So, the Department of Community Programs is inviting the community to an open house March 1st, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, at Cornog Field House. Participants will be able to view improvements and renovations to Cornog Field House, and preview updates to the new community center building, which is underway and making progress, so. Also, congratulations to DCP on receiving its third Best of Aquatics Award, presented by Aquatics International Magazine. This year, the Summit Family Aquatic Center received the magazine's Best of Programming Award for the new Mermaid classes, a popular new program that was introduced in 2017. Registration is also underway for summer camps, the Family Aquatic Center, and the municipal golf course. And you can get all this information at the summercommunityprograms.com to sign up. DCS, Community Services, the Locust Drive culvert project is underway. This county-funded project will replace the existing culvert on the section of Locust Drive between Blackburn Road and Tulip Street. Utility tie-ins on Tulip Street may result in periodic temporary detours. Locust Drive between Blackburn Road and Tulip Street will be closed to all but all local traffic for two months, so that's an important note to make. The next Summit Free Market dates are Saturdays, April 28th and May 5th, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, at the transfer station. Bring yard sale quality usable items to share, and take whatever you want to, or need, it's all free. And lastly, Summit's firefighters are getting ready to, you ready? Set the runway, set the runway on fire, as part of the fifth annual red carpet party and fashion show at the Canoe Brook Country Club on March 1st. This important event raises money for family and children's services, and it's an independent nonprofit behavioral health and social service agency, serving Union County and surrounding areas. It was founded in 1893. The agency focuses its efforts on at-risk, disadvantaged, and traumatized children, youth, and families. For more information, please visit its website at facs nj.org, and we'll also be posting that information on the city website. Chief, you want to give a quick runway walk, just to see how you? That's all I have tonight, Council President.
Thank you, Michael. I'm going to ask everybody to speak up a little bit, because there's this din of the humming of the fans, and so it's a little bit hard to hear everyone, so, so, for those of you at home who are listening, we're not shouting at each other, we're just trying to hear each other. Let me just make, just on the Council President's report, just a couple of things. I join the mayor in wishing everyone who's celebrating Chinese New Year a very Happy New Year. Two announcements. One, Robert Maxx, as those of you who know, who have been following the last couple of council meetings, we have instituted, or we've helped to promote this program called Hometown Heroes. Robert Maxx, who is a veteran from World War II, who survived a Nazi labor camp, is going to be speaking at the library on March 7th at 7:00 PM. The program is designed for middle school and high school students, so those of you who fit that category, it is an opportunity, probably one of the few remaining opportunities, to see a person who has survived such an ordeal, as we recognize the fact that fewer and fewer people who were, fought in that war and survived it, are with us today. Secondly, as I had announced at the reorganization meeting in January, council is going to go on the road. We're going to go out to the community to meet folks in order to listen to their concerns outside of the council chambers. Obviously, people can come to council and give public comments, which we will have an opportunity in a few minutes, but we're also going to go out this year and meet folks. And so the first of those meetings will be held on March 27th at 7:00 PM at Wallace Chapel. And it is really a listening session. The mayor, and I, and two members of council will be attending, and we'll be rotating the members of council who will be attending at the other locations to be announced, but we anticipate at least two more, if not three more, such meetings throughout the course of the year. And with that, I'd like to introduce Amon McTiernan to come up and present the Summit Historical Minute for us for this evening. Amon?
All right, hi. I'm Amon McTiernan, and in honor of the start of the spring sports season at Summit High School next week, I'm going to be talking a little bit about a coach that shaped Summit sports. Coach Elwood C. Cornog, senior, coached football, baseball, and basketball, served as athletic director, ran all gym classes, and taught hygiene classes at Summit High School. They had hygiene classes at Summit High School back then. Throughout his 30-year career at Summit High, he did and went through some incredible things. During the Great Depression, Coach Cornog bought pants, shirts, and overcoats for needy kids at school. During World War II, he started every gym class with a close-order drill, manual of arms, and marching with wooden rifles. Coach Cornog had been an infantry sergeant in World War II, so he really knew what he was doing. When he finally retired in 1956, Coach Cornog had organized the Suburban Conference, including many teams from Melbourne, Madison, Caldwell, Glen Ridge, and Verona. Overall, Coach Cornog gave so much to Summit Athletics, and we continue to honor his contributions by wearing maroon and white every time we go on the field. Go Hilltoppers!
Thanks, Amon. Can you give us the rosary? Yes, perfect. Thank you. Great, thank you. Thank you, Amon. Thank you, Steve, for organizing. We're now at the point of our agenda to have presentations. And tonight, we're going to have a presentation from the Environmental Commission. This year, also, we're going to try, what we are going to do is have different committees, commissions, boards, that we have in the city, come and give presentations to council, so that all of council can hear what it is that they do, some of the members, so we can recognize and thank them for their service, and to find out what the issues are that they are tackling, and that they intend to tackle, and give the opportunity for members to ask questions for them. So with that introduction, I would like Beth Lovejoy, the Chair of the Environmental Commission, to come up. Beth?
He's a little taller than us. As David said, I'm Beth Lovejoy, I'm Chair of the Environmental Commission, and I'm introducing tonight Melissa Spur, who is part of a new group this year called, informally called the Green Team, which is not a city entity, but that, which has worked this year collaboratively with us, and I'm going to let her talk about what they do in just a minute. But for those of you who don't already know me, I've been around harassing people for a while. We are tasked with making recommendations to council and to the planning board, generally on issues of sustainability and environmental protection. We have a number of projects we do every year, and then some temporary projects and ongoing education. This year, we are in the process of gearing up for our 12th annual Earth Day cleanup, which was started 12 years ago by Marjorie Fox, when she was, I guess, part of the Environmental Commission, or Recycling Environmental Commission. And that is on April 21st, Saturday, April 21st, so please plan on attending. We have right now, usually, it's about five sites in Summit, and two of them are open to anybody to walk in, and the other ones you pre-register for. We have groups that come every year, scouts and community groups and school groups, and there is less trash, I'm happy to report, than there's been in the past, so in addition to picking up trash and recycling, we do work on the trails. We have trails cleared and woodchips being put down, and we're very grateful to Paul Cascase and to Mike Caputo, the guys at the transfer station, who are wonderful about delivering tools and woodchips and whatever we need, and then picking up all the trash afterwards. We occasionally have something, a cleanup on a specific site, other than that specific day, because people aren't always available then, so we're, we call it a season, and we'll do whatever it takes to accommodate people. We also, over the last couple of years, have put into place, with Michael Rogers' help, the Low Cost Energy Audit Program, which is part of the BPU Home Performance with Energy Star program. This allows, we made an arrangement with a contractor, CEEL Power, to come in, and for $49, homeowners can get a full assessment of their energy usage and recommendations. This is a couple hundred dollars or more, less than what they would normally pay. And that, this program is ending in June, and to date, it's been over 200 homeowners taking advantage of that, including Mayor Radist, who has been great about helping us publicize it, as has Amy Cairns, in the Communications Office. We do ongoing work on the Passaic River Trails. One guy, Jeff Hankinson, an EC member, has been working on the trails for a long time. And last year, we got a grant from ANJEC, which is the Association of New Jersey Environmental Commissions, for about $1,000 to expand and renovate a set of steep steps up along the Passaic River Trails, and Jeff will be finishing that up in the spring. We are tasked with preparing Summit's Sustainable Jersey application. I'm grateful we don't have to do that every year, because it's a big job, but many of you know that in 2017, Summit once again got the most points of any mid-sized city in the state, so we are champions. But that's not just the Environmental Commission, we do some things, but what I do is gather information from all different departments. We have great input for that. Marion Glenn, a longtime member, was instrumental in having the rain gardens installed at City Hall and at the library, with the help of people at Rutgers, who did a beautiful job. If you haven't seen those rain gardens, I encourage you to look at them, because they were really lovely. We have an architect on the Environmental Commission that reviews plans that are going before the zoning board and planning board, and makes comments on behalf of the Environmental Commission. And we have ongoing public outreach. We have an active open-group Facebook page with over 500 members, and we are in contact often with the city and share posts, and we found, actually, that Facebook, for now, because it keeps changing, is one of the most effective ways to get volunteers, for example, for the Earth Day cleanup, and to disseminate information. We're not as good at social media as the Green Team is, but we're getting there. And we have ongoing, we coordinate with all different departments, including the Engineering Department, and the Department of Community Programs has asked us recently to help them develop a campaign to reduce litter and dog waste on the city's fields, which we'll be tackling soon. And, let's see. Oh, and we're working now on a recommended trees, shrubs, and plant list with both the Shade Tree Advisory Committee and Summit's Garden Club, which we will then make available online and at the Department of Community Services. So we have a lot going on, and I'm going to let you hear from Melissa about what the Green Team is doing with us and on their own.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Melissa Spur, and I am part of the Summit Green Team, called Green Summit New Jersey, and we work as kind of the community outreach arm of the Environmental Commission. So we do two things. One, we do the community outreach, so we have a website called greensummitnj.org, where we've kind of compiled a lot of the local sustainability resources into one place for our residents. We also do a lot of outreach on social media, so we have a Facebook page that's very active, and an Instagram, and we send out a monthly newsletter with kind of sustainability news that's super local, state, national, global, kind of discussions that are happening every month, only once a month, if you want to sign up, greensummitnj.org. The other thing we do is host monthly events. These have typically been free events, and they were guided by participant requests. So we've done ones on backyard composting, and vegan cooking, which is a really popular one now, and zero-waste options, and we've recently started partnering with other green groups in town to kind of coordinate our efforts. So we do events with Green Faith, as well as the Arboretum. We have a few events with them coming up this year. And, so, yeah, it's very exciting. And the other thing we do is, we're kind of the worker bees of the Environmental Commission, so when there is a research task to be done, we kind of rally the troops. We have about seven members right now, and we all kind of take pieces apart. So one of the things we did most recently was, when we heard the development regulations were going to be revised, we, you know, took it upon ourselves, with the help of Beth and other members of the EC, to look into things that Summit might want to see as changes in their development regulations that have a sustainability focus. So that memo ended up being quite longer than we expected it to be initially, but the topics we covered there were about including solar guidance in our development regulations, including green building, design standards, things like LEED, improvements on the stormwater ordinance and management, and trees, which Beth will talk about now, so.
So this memo is not what you call light reading. It's pretty long, and we actually made a presentation to the planning board a couple weeks ago about it, and they were very receptive, which was nice. The tree piece of it is something we'd actually been working on even before we started addressing development regulations. You may know that over the last 10 years, Summit has lost about 400 to 500 trees as a result of storms, and they will be losing another 300 to 400 as the Emerald Ash Bor makes its way into Summit. It hasn't, it's not in Summit yet, but it's in New Jersey, and once it's here, it's here for a long time, and it will kill every ash tree that's not treated. Because it is expensive to treat ash trees, the city forester is selecting certain trees that they will treat, but basically, the rest of them are going to be gone. So our tree canopy has taken a big hit. And one of the problems with that is that not only are there environmental reasons for keeping trees, there are economic reasons for preserving the mature trees. They, in particular, from a municipal standpoint, they absorb a lot of stormwater, so they are crucial to stormwater management. The more trees that are taken down, the more apt we are to suffer erosion and flooding, so that that piece is really important, from both a homeowner and municipal standpoint. Trees also reduce hotspots, because they provide shade, they reduce the cost of air conditioning from that, and they also reduce the cost of heating in the winter by providing a windbreak. They hark back to your days of science classes, they absorb carbon dioxide, and they give out oxygen, so... They absorb carbon dioxide and they give out oxygen, so they clean the air. So trees are really important. Summit is a recognized tree city. And what we are recommending for trees are a couple of things. One is to more robustly enforce what's already in the tree ordinance. Particularly for people who remove trees, there is a provision in the ordinance that the city can collect money. If they cannot replant trees on their own property, they should be collecting money to put into a tree fund so that a tree can be planted elsewhere. Right now, the city forester will tell you that we are losing more trees than we are planting. So for at least the time being, it's a good time to kind of strengthen tree ordinance, make it a little harder to take down a tree, I think educate people a little more about why it's important that we work on trees. So that's, that's a portion that I think is already being discussed with various people and we're, we're working on that. The other piece we're working on right now is a green development checklist that Melissa's been involved a lot in. And actually Melissa and I met with Krista Anderson, who is the city zoning officer, and Rick Matias, who's a city engineer, last week about the whole memo, but also specifically the green development checklist. And they were extremely helpful. They were lovely. They spent a lot of time with us and their suggestions were great. They were very supportive and helped us to have a perspective that we don't have about how things actually get done. So we are in the process of making some revisions to the memo and that should be done within the next week or so. And at that point, we'll, I guess, give a copy to you, Rosemary, that you can circulate. I know Mayor Radist has already seen, and earlier, as I think Mr. Naidoo has too. So that's what we're, we are working on at the moment. And we are happy at any time to meet with anybody. It would be my pleasure to talk to any of you who have any suggestions, ideas, particularly about communication, which always seems to be a challenge, but also anything you'd like to let us know or have us work on.
Okay, thank you, Beth. Thank you, Melissa. Questions from council members? I'm sorry. Matt?
What's the optimal shade cover percentage and what are we at with Summit?
The, what the Shade Tree Advisory Committee and the city forester shoot for is about a 40% tree canopy cover. The last time it was formally calculated, it was under that at 37%, and that was before the storms. So we know we are under, under, we were under where we should be before we've lost all these trees.
So would you consider that to be one of our biggest environmental issues in Summit?
I do because it hits so many different things between, particularly with stormwater management, which I know is a great concern for the city and something that the city's working on. I think when we talk about non-structural fixes that can save the city money, I think keeping mature trees, it's one thing, you know, we can replant trees, but you're, when you're losing a big tree and you're replanting a little tree, you're not getting the benefit. So yes, I would consider that a priority.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mayor?
Not a question, just want to thank you very much. I read that report. It is not light reading, but it was very well-written and I know you had a lot to do with it, Melissa, and, and just really informative. So, you know, this is the guidance and that's just why these commissions like yours and all the various volunteer boards really can help inform the discussion. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, let me just make a couple of comments. Obviously, I've heard you guys now twice. I heard you at the planning board as well as now here. And I think it's, it is very important that many of the things that you raise are those things that were also discussed in the master plan. And that, that this is things that were not only discussed in the Environmental Commission or the Green Team, but are generally things that are supported by the community. The issue of strengthening the tree ordinance or revising it in order to address the tree canopy is a financial issue for the city, but it's also a financial issue for residents who live in specific neighborhoods and who have seen sometimes clear cutting of trees in their neighborhoods and thereby having a direct impact on property values. And so I have obviously in the past gotten comments and questions from folks saying, what's going on? Why, you know, why is that being allowed to be done in my neighborhood? And so I think one of the things that we will take up in the near term is a revised tree ordinance and try to strengthen it and to look at it in a careful way. And I'm sure the EC, the Shade Tree Commission, will be involved in helping to shape that. So that's something to look forward to as far as getting some concrete results from having these discussions. So I appreciate you guys coming in, being the first up to bat for, for this initiative of trying to get the different commissions and boards to come in. But I think it's important for all of council to hear what different commissions and boards are doing. And so therefore, we're all up to date as far as what, what's going on with folks who have volunteered their time and effort so diligently for the city. So thank you very much and thank your colleagues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. We're now at the portion for public comments. So if anyone has comments on anything that's not on the agenda, now is the time to come up and speak. Any public comments? Okay, seeing none. We're going to move on to ordinances for hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please read ordinance for hearing?
Number 18-3156, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-8 Parking, to add new subsections 7-8.9, front and side yard parking prohibited, and 7-8.10 penalties and fines.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Gould?
Yes, thank you, Council President. This ordinance is returning something that we used to have in Summit that was sunsetted, which basically prohibits people from parking their cars in their lawns. They can park their cars in their driveways, but not in their lawns. And then there's a $100 fine, which would be issued by the Summit Police Department.
Second. Anyone from the board that has any comments, questions? Any members of the public who wish to be heard on this ordinance? Please.
Davis Gates?
G-A-T-E-S, 16 Hughes Place, representing myself today. On this ordinance, when it goes through, I just want the common council to be aware that there are some very crafty people out there. And when you get this ordinance through, if there are people that like to park on their side lawn and so forth, you might want to, the folks that handle variances for driveways and et cetera, you might want to make sure that, that if, if your goal is to kind of reduce traffic or parking around houses, and I know there's some safety issues that can be in that, it's going to be up to you to decide if it's a problem, but if you start seeing an uptick in people that are replacing their lawns with driveways so that they can keep their cars on park there, I don't know if that's going to be a problem or not, but it's just something to be aware of when this ordinance goes through because, because I know that in the past, people have been parking on sidewalks and that's been enforced. But when you pass a new law, it could create another problem. So just be aware of that in the future. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. Is there anyone that wants to, Mr. Gould?
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Gates. And we discussed that in the public safety meeting. We, it is going to go hand in hand with making sure that people don't, you know, abuse the, there's a very set rules for how much of your driveway, how much of your yard can be driveway. And we'll definitely be on the lookout for that as well to make sure that nobody flouts the law.
Mike?
Just a question for councilmen. When was this sunsetted? Do we know?
Yes. It was, it was made in time for the PGA Tour tournament that we had. And then I think it had a five-year, had a five-year, you know, it was on for five years and then it went away.
Got you. Because I had, honestly, I thought this was an ordinance in town.
Oh, yes. Sorry, thank you, Chief Wack.
It wasn't five years. It was just for the, the duration of the PGA tournament in 2005 because we did not want people renting out their lawns for money and filling their lawns, obviously, and then having pedestrians walk on that. So it was, it was just for the, I wish it was five years, it would have been a lot easier, but it was just for that during the tournament.
Thank you for that clarification. I apologize.
Yeah, honestly, I, I thought this was an ordinance only because there was someone in my neighborhood years ago who, after a month of having their car parked on their front lawn, some neighbor finally complained and someone from the police came and it was gone the next day. So I don't know what.
Now we can tip.
Right.
There's no, there's no happy phase of it and that is now.
Right, okay. Well, makes complete sense to me.
And there is though a clause for emergencies, right? I mean, if there is an emergency where someone needs for, for, please, Chief, come up.
Through you, Council President. There is. We're obviously going to go, we're going to speak with the residents. It's a little bit like when we changed the sidewalk where we enforced it with the landlords and the residents. We're going to talk to people. We're not just going to go and, you know, just to hammer them and just, you know, issue them a summons. They might have had something that happened, maybe a water main under their driveway. They don't want to park on it for fear of it dropping or what have you, but we'll talk with them. But it's also going to kind of combat a little bit of, a lot of commercial vehicles where someone might be parking a lot of vehicles on their house on the side. That's, that's another avenue that we'll be able to start those conversations. And, you know, we were always fair, affirm, we'll give the warning. And if we go back and we're still seeing it, now we have a tool that we can enforce with a consequence, a financial consequence.
Right. So this is not just restricted to residential units, residences, but it's also for commercial entities?
Right. Through DCS, you have to go through a permit. If you, if you do want to make a new gravel or driveway on the side, there's a procedure that you have to go through with, you know, upstairs and go through the whole process.
Zoning.
Zoning.
Zoning. Anyone else have any questions, comments?
All right, one more comment. Thank you for bringing up about the commercial vehicles. And, and I wanted to let you know, when we went to the East Summit Association, Mr. Davis, I want to let you know, when we went to the East Summit Association meeting, this was what we heard, the number one complaint, and that's, that's what's happening here.
So it's a good step.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. Hearing, no other comments and questions? Let me close this hearing. Ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance number 18-3156, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-8 Parking, to add new subsections 7-8.9, front and side yard parking prohibited, and 7-8.10 penalties and fines.
Councilwoman Gould?
I move to adopt this.
Second. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Aye.
Ms. Ogden?
Aye.
President Naidoo?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on, excuse me. Ordinances for introduction. Madam Clerk, would you please read ordinance for introduction, number 5276?
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter 35, Development Regulations Ordinance, Article 4, Zoning, Subsection 4.2-9 Yard Regulations, and Article 5, Design and Performance Standards, Subsection 5.2-18, Screening of Exterior Mechanical Equipment.
Councilwoman Fox?
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance to amend the development regulation ordinance, the zoning ordinance, and it governs the placement of new or replacement air conditioner condensers. This ordinance establishes a consistent five-foot side yard property line setback in all zones for new or replacement air conditioner condenser unit. It also requires screening of units in a side yard by fencing or vegetation. This revision addresses the inconsistencies in the various zones of the, in the DRO. This revision is based on recommendation of the zoning board of adjustment to the planning board. So the zoning board has heard a large volume of variance applications because of inconsistencies on the setback requirements and has recommended to the planning board that this ordinance be amended to address this inconsistency. The planning board reviewed the proposed amendment to the ordinance at its September 25th, 2017 meeting, and the planning board has unanimously recommended that the common council consider this language for adoption. I would note that a revised version of this ordinance has been posted on the city website today and it's items one and two on page two, where the words "property line" have been added for clarification. So if you look on the, on the city website now, you'll find that. I hereby move this ordinance for introduction.
Second.
Thank you. Just a, just a tiny clarification on the technical aspect. I believe that it will be posted tomorrow morning, the revised version. But just so that folks, if they're following this and they're looking at it, it is in 35-5.2-18, Subsection D, 1, at the very end, after the word "side yard," the word "property line" is inserted. And then in subsection D, 2, again, after the word "side yard," the word "property line" is inserted. That is the only change. And this is an ordinance for introduction. And so we will have a hearing on this ordinance at the next council meeting, which was set for March 6th. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Aye.
Ms. Ogden?
Aye.
President Naidoo?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to resolutions now. First up, finance. Councilwoman Little, please.
Thank you, Council President. Finance Resolution Number 5527 is to authorize emergency temporary appropriations for the municipal operating budget. And this resolution will authorize appropriations to the budget primarily for the cost of the shared municipal court with New Providence. And it's being added to the temporary budget because the, the fact that the payments were due monthly was not anticipated when the temporary budget was passed. And just as a point of clarification for those listening at home, the temporary budget may be amended at any time up to and including January 30th. And after that date, the limit of appropriations needs to be adopted by council. So therefore, I am asking that council approve this resolution.
Second.
Okay, this is a, well, any comments from members of council? Any comments from the members of public? Any further discussion by members of council? This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Aye.
Ms. Ogden?
Aye.
President Naidoo?
Aye.
Finance and Personnel, number two.
Finance Resolution Number Two is number 5561, and this is to authorize emergency temporary appropriations to the parking utility, is similar to the first resolution in that it is authorizing $15,000 in expenses that were not anticipated and known at the time the temporary budget was established for the parking utility. And I ask that council move this resolution for approval.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions from members of council?
Just the first resolution had a pretty succinct breakdown of what the different budgeted items were. In this one, though, there's $11,000 to replace entry tickets and then an other category for $4,000. Do we have any more, a little more clarity on what that is?
My recollection is that the, there was an anticip, or unanticipated increase in the e-ticketing that we, we moved over to a new company and I think there was an upfront cost that we didn't anticipate in the temporary budget. So that's, I think, part of what we're requesting in the other.
Any other comments from, or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion by members of council? Okay, this is another roll call vote. Rosie?
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Ms. McTiernan?
Aye.
Ms. Ogden?
Aye.
President Naidoo?
Aye.
Moving on, General Services, Councilwoman Ogden.
Thank you, Council President. This is a, this Resolution 5526. This resolution is to authorize the purchase and installation of artificial turf for upper Tatlock Field pursuant to the Educational Services Commission in the amount of $434,473. The current field is now 11 years old and due to be replaced. The life expectancy of these fields is approximately eight or so years. The time for replacement would be the first week of June to the middle of August, not interfering at all with the graduation, which will take place on Investors Field. The request is being funded through the following accounts, the Field Rest- The request is being funded through the following accounts, the Field Restoration Fund, which saves the city approximately $100,000, and the 2016 capital budget. The turf will be installed by Shaw Spike Zone, or Shaw Sports Turf, who the county also uses and is very happy with. The new turf will be stitched, alleviating the need for our crews to line the fields as we do now. So at this time, I'd like to move this resolution for adoption. Second.
Comments and questions from members of council? Councilman Gould.
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Ogden, how long will this one last? Eight years still?
Eight-year warranty.
And one other question, you said it's from the 2016 capital budget, so is that...the money was allocated two years ago, and we're just paying for it now?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from...Mike?
Thanks, Council President. Just maybe Judith can speak to this. $100,000 is coming from this improvement fund. I know there...that the various private organizations in town pay user fees to use fields and things like that. I just think for the public, it might make some sense just to explain how that money flows, and some of that goes into operating versus some that goes to a capital account.
Absolutely, please.
Yes, the Field Restoration Committees, which are the user groups, the management group, and then the executive group, have set aside $100,000 for each one of the athletic fields that have artificial turf that needed to be replaced. And this is the last one that we are obligated to do through the city and the Field Restoration Fund. So each child that plays a field sport that requires maintenance of fields pays $20 in addition to their fee to either the sports group, or if they are through our recreation program. And those $20 over the years have been accumulating, and we have these three levels of groups that I mentioned earlier that make the recommendations. And because artificial turf takes less maintenance than, for example, the natural baseball fields, it felt that it evened it up as far as how much attention each one of the groups would get. So we've been able to substantially save quite a bit of money on the artificial turf replacement. We're very excited about the Shaw product. The purchase-install through a county co-op has enabled us to save a substantial amount of money, just on a field replacement alone, just on the materials that we were getting bids on two years ago, was $500,000 for a field of this size. So by going into this co-op and the purchase-install and the highly competitive nature of the business right now, we were able to really get a very good price. And we're very excited about the product. Union County has had this particular product for some time on their most heavily-used fields, including fields in Raway and Linden that get a lot of adult use. And the technology with this is a knit with a thatch underneath, so it's a little bit more of a heavier-duty field than you may have seen in the past on Upper Tatlock. It's different, of course, we have the Deso Premier, which is, you know, professional level, high school level, extremely incredible field to play on. However, the Shaw that we visited throughout the state has really held up beautifully under the recreation conditions and high school. So it takes a beating up there. This one is...I arrived in 2007, and we cut the ribbon in 2007 on Upper Tatlock and Glenside. Quick update on Glenside, if I can, the GMAX testing's going to happen Friday or Monday, weather permitting, and as long as it passes the GMAX test, which we have every reason to believe it will, we'll be able to open Upper Glenside...be able to open Glenside.
Soccer season starts in two weeks.
Yes, and the protective netting is up at the lacrosse soccer football field at Investors, and it made it through the snow that we had on Saturday. So every time we put up that netting, snow comes two or three days later, so it did quite well. So we're almost there, almost there. Any more questions?
Since you're...Mike, do you have another? Oh, no, I just had one comment. I know your people do a great job in maintaining these fields, and it's somewhat, I think, misunderstood amongst the public that when you make a big investment in these turf fields, which this is a big investment, it's almost a half a million dollars, that they're supposed to last forever. And it's just not true. These things get a lot of wear and tear. I've spent a lot of hours on those fields, and they are literally used on weekends from 7:00 a.m. till dark.
Till dark.
They get a lot of usage in this town, and a lot of wear. And I think, to your credit, Upper Tatlock, you walked on that field, it had patches and things sewn in where the goalie boxes were and things like that. You were able to stretch the lifetime of that field quite a few years longer than...
Well, we got 10 seasons, going into 11 seasons out of it, which is darn good.
Yeah.
I do have to pass the credit on to DCS, in particular to Chris Hollenstein, who is our grassmeister, and he has done an exceptional job. I will tell you this, East Brunswick Township, where I worked for many years, a young man there was the director looking at artificial turf fields, replacements, getting ready to do some replacements. He came to all of our fields, he also went to several other communities and wrote this report, which is fantastic, it saved me from having to do it. But he complimented us on the maintenance, that none of the other fields, whatever products they were, and we've had them all here, we've had Deso, which is the newest Investors Bank Field, we had Field Turfs, Board X, Bordeaux, and ours have held up far better than any of those others that he also visited. So it was kind of nice to have an outside opinion. We went and visited many of them, but he attributed it to the great care. For the public's information, we fluff them, fill them, we vacuum with magnets, and you'd be surprised, Chris always brings me the bag of metal pieces, maybe it's a safety pin, or bobby pins, or hair clips, or the little round rings that come off of kid sneakers, and that metal can build up. And, you know, with Chris's work, and we're constantly GMAX testing him for safety, we couldn't get the life out of them if we didn't have Chris and the guys at DCS. Having all of the lines sewn in is going to be a huge labor saver. I mean, they are really excited about it. And both Glenside and Upper Tatlock and Investors Bank Field are lined for all the sports stitched in, so no more running around with paint and last minute going on out and having to do it, or having the weather eliminate the lines. So we have to thank DCS for that kind of care.
All right, and just one last comment, Council President. This is the first time that Tatlock has been replaced.
Mm-hmm.
So if people recall, when the proposal to put this turf field on Tatlock, people went nuts about this thing. So this was as ugly of a community discussion as you've seen in Summit for quite some time. And I guess the takeaway that I received from that, while people can be passionate about stuff, a lot of times it works out. And I've had a lot of people come up to me over the last several years and say, boy, I was, you know, manning the barricades about this, and it's actually worked out very, very well. It's not to dissuade people from being passionate about things, but we do work in a community, and a lot of times, you know, that collective wisdom in the community ends up doing the right thing.
And you don't always have the voices of those people that are participating, or the dozens and dozens and hundreds and thousands of kids that have come through athletics that also should have a voice.
Well, you know, I want to commend you, Judith, because if you think about Tatlock overall, we replace, we have new tennis courts, and we have new bleachers, a new sound system, a new football field, and we're moving forward presumably tonight with Upper Tatlock with the new field there. And that's quite an accomplishment, I think, in the last just few years that have been all put together. The only thing I would ask is, of course...
It's scheduled.
The basketball court?
Yes. There's some crack repair on the basketball courts that are scheduled, there's some window replacement at the Anderson Field House, so we're doing as much as we can in pieces. But there is a ultimate plan, just to be used as a planning document, so that we don't trip over ourselves, that we don't pave an area that really should be a planted area. So, you know, working with the DCP Advisory Board and PPD, who did most of our design in that park, we have a game plan moving forward, no matter who's steering the ship.
Right, well, I think, I think as we had tonight the Environmental Commission, we will have the DCP Board here.
Yes, they'd like to come in the fall.
And we will have them at that point in time, I think it would be a great idea to have them present with all the different plans for all the different fields of this way people can see.
And if any of you can't make the open house time, which is Thursday the 1st, please come by any day and see our new home, our temporary home, at the Cornog Field House at 5 Myrtle. If you haven't gone by at night, it's a delight, it's just, you know, in its old splendor. And you'll be seeing lots of metal starting to arrive at 100 Morris. The roofing and superstructure of the gymnasium is due to arrive on giant flatbeds, it'll be coming very soon, as well as some of the metal. So there's been all of the work underground and underneath and beyond what you can see from your car, and pretty soon it will start to rise up.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one more question.
Absolutely.
When's the last time...when was the $20 fee for field usage set? When's the last time we raised it, and could we raise it?
It was set in, I want to say, 2005, Matt, forgive me if I might be off by one, and we have not changed it at all. And we haven't changed it because we have found it to be more than adequate. When you look about...it may seem like minor, $20 for one kid, but if you have multiple kids playing multiple seasons of sports, it could really add up. So until we really feel that we need it, it's an unnecessary tax on getting kids to be fit and healthy, which is what we want them to do. But if we find, you know, that we need more, it would come through that three-step process, and the representatives of council and the Board of Ed would be involved in that final decision. But we've been trying to hold it steady.
I guess I was just thinking that if, instead of $100,000 towards the cost, we could get it up to $150,000, the course cost for next time.
Well, in 10 years, the next director can worry about that, Matt, because all the fields have been replaced in my tenure.
Right.
So I came with new fields, and I'm leaving you some new fields.
And I just want to...I agree with Councilmember McTiernan, this is a big investment, this is almost a half million dollars, but from my view, there's almost no better way to invest. We're investing in our city youth, and like Councilmember McTiernan, I've spent many, 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 many hours on that field. And, you know, we're talking about the stitching, we're stitching it for lines for football boys and girls, lacrosse and soccer, which just speaks to the breadth of the use of this field. And it is used by kindergarten, peewee, rec, football, all the way up to the high school sports. It is used from morning till night, almost every day, you know, it's just in constant use, and it's a really great investment in our youth, and really, it touches so many people in the community, so from...
And from time to time, our private school partners also need to come on the field, so we do help them. And there's been many a duck, duck, goose played by the first and second graders on the Upper Tatlock turf by the physical education teacher.
Great.
Mary.
Well, I'm just going to say, my son played on the rocks before the turf field.
I'm sorry.
And we're really a little sad that it wasn't there when he was playing, but I spent a lot of time on the rocks. So there you have it.
That's BJ, before Judith.
Yes.
Thank God.
Lots of cuts and bruises.
Thank God. Well, he's probably tougher for it.
Anyone else? Okay, any comments from the public? Any further discussion by council?
Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Okay, do we have a...we don't have a roll call for this?
No, you just have a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to works, Councilman Bowman.
Thank you.
Would you like to bundle any of these?
Well, you took the words right out of my mouth.
There you go.
Thank you, Council President. Let's, in an effort to get us out of here, out of this heat wave, I'd like to bundle 1, 2, and 3.
Great idea.
Resolution 5540, these resolutions are requesting authorization to purchase supplies from state-approved cooperatives. First Resolution 5541 is for rock salt required for maintaining roads, not margaritas in the winter months. We are authorized to purchase from Morton Salt, Inc., through the Union Co-op, not to exceed $70,000 at a rate of $48.80 a ton, comes out to about 1,400 tons, it's a lot of salt. Resolution 5540 is to purchase diesel fuel, we are authorized to purchase from National Fuel through the Somerset County Purchasing Co-op, not to exceed $130,000. The co-op's delivery cost is...has a delivery charge of $0.06, $0.06 a gallon. This is for all city vehicles, as well as, including the police, fire, and services, public work services. Resolution 5537 is to purchase unleaded gas from National Fuel through Somerset County Co-op, not to exceed $135,000, and they're putting a point, or eight cents, eight and a quarter cents gallon delivery cost. Currently, they're charging us about $1.80 a gallon for your...so we're saving money from that perspective. And these three resolutions provide supplies for all city vehicles, including Board of Education, EMS, fire, and police, plus the city services. We also have shared services with surrounding communities that we are getting money back for these services. These amounts were used in preparing the 2018 budget. I move we accept these resolutions.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Any further discussion by members of council? Okay, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Mr. Bowman.
Okay, the next one is Resolution 5463, is to authorize the replacement of carpet in six areas in City Hall, including the Engineering, Tax, Finance, Administration, Clerk's Office, and portions of the Police Department. The carpet we have dates back to when this building was opened, close to 25 years ago. The condition of carpet is, in many areas, is at best shabby. It presents tripping hazards, plus the habits the offices could use and upgrade. The money has been budgeted in prior years, capital budgets, and it has been discussed for several years. Through the state contract with the state, all state office interiors, we will replace 1,210 square yards, or about 11,000 square foot, for $63,306.44, so about a little over $5 a square foot, pretty good price. I move we accept this resolution.
Second.
Comments from members of council? Mr. Gould.
I thank our municipal employees for suffering with this carpet for so long. I've seen the pictures, I've seen the duct tape. Thank you.
Any other...
We're not...I've kind of gotten used to this carpet, though. We're going to keep this, right?
Yeah. This looks good to me.
We're looking to replace with linoleum, but I thought so.
Shag, possibly, yeah. And Paul, I think I asked you, if the Police Department is being renovated, that's...we're not going to be doing the carpeting and then renovating, right? I mean, so...
Thank you, Council President. Yes, so that is part of this purchase, the Police Department area, but that will be installed following their renovation, of course.
Okay, great.
But it is part of this purchase.
Understood. And this is all things that have been previously budgeted in prior capital budgets, correct?
Correct, correct.
Any further questions or comments from members of council? Comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion by members of council? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Mr. Bowman.
Okay, my last one is Resolution 5552, authorizes the extension of Summit's contract with GovDeals, Inc., an online auction service for disposing of public property no longer required for public service. Basically, equipment that has been replaced and provides a financial...and it provides a financial responsible way to get more than scrap value for the property no longer in service. This would extend the contract through September 30th, 2018. I move we accept this resolution.
Second.
Any comments or questions from members of council? Comments, questions from members of the public? Any further discussion by members of council? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Moving along. Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. The first Buildings and Grounds Resolution is 5559, is the Hometown Heroes Banner Ad-Hoc Committee, and we're appointing members. On February 6th, the common council established the Hometown Heroes Ad-Hoc Committee to administer the Hometown Heroes Banner Program, and to set the necessary policies and procedures governing the program. The program will honor current and former city residents and city employees who are veterans or active-duty members of the armed services, with banners displayed on DeForest Avenue from Memorial Day till the 4th of July. The Ad-Hoc Committee is comprised of representatives from the American Legion, the Summit Area Public Foundation, Department of Community Services, a council liaison, and two citizens at large, all for one year. at large, all for one-year terms. I would like to move that Paul Cascades be appointed as the Department of Community Services representative, that Marjorie Fox be appointed as council liaison, that Michael Arline and Karen Schneider be appointed as citizens at large.
Second.
Any comments, questions from members of council? Any questions or comments from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Next.
Okay. Buildings and Grounds Number Two, that's resolution 5564, is to authorize the submission of a grant application for the Summit Hometown Heroes Project to the Summit Area Public Foundation. The City of Summit seeks a grant of up to $10,000 to supplement fundraising to purchase banners and banner brackets for the Hometown Heroes Program. The city will not be required to contribute matching funds, but will install the banners and brackets as an in-kind donation. I'd like to move this resolution.
Second.
Any comments, questions from members of council? I'll just say that, you know, we're making this application to the Summit Area Public Foundation for Hometown Heroes Project. I would also encourage members of council and their networks of people that they know to donate. It'll be great if we could raise, if the folks who are working so hard in this ad hoc committee can raise the monies necessary for placement of these banners in the places that they would like to see it put up. We already, I think they've raised a fair amount of money already, but it would be great to have everybody chip in and contribute to this community program. I'd also like to just put a shout out there to the public that they're still taking, I believe, applications for folks, and so if folks know people who, you know, who qualify under the criteria for a banner, we encourage you to go ahead and make that application in, and that would be great. Any comment, Matt?
I just want to add on to what you were saying there, Council President. I saw a posting from a former council member, Pat Hurley, that said that the problem is that a lot of our hero veterans are modest, and they don't want to nominate themselves. And so I think a lot of times people would think, oh, they'll be nominate, you know, they'll be nominated for sure, but they won't. Like, for instance, former council member Hurley himself, I would like to have nominated, being a veteran. So I'm hopeful that, you know, you nominate your friends and family.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. I would just note that we, at this point, are requiring that it be either a family member or the veteran or active-duty member themselves, because we can't just be putting people's images and names on banners without their permission. So if you want to have your friend nominate you, you should probably work with them and sign off on this, because we don't want to just be putting people's images up there. But you can go to the City of Summit website, and the application is on there and all the information, and there is no charge for having a banner put up. So if you're interested, you know, we always, we welcome donations, but it's not required in order to be honored, so.
Accuracy is key. Of course, you have to get the person themselves to want to do it, but...
Any comments?
Thank you, Councilmember Fox, for clarifying.
Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion by members of council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Next.
Okay. Buildings and Grounds Three, resolution 5515, appoint Mayor's Partnership for Public Art members. There are two unfilled positions on the Arts Committee, Mayor's Partnership for Public Art, after the appointments meeting at the end of last year. The mayor has appointed Richard Pector and Tiana Hitchen to fill these positions. I move the resolution for council to confirm these appointments.
Second.
Any comments or questions from members of council? Comments or questions from members of the public? Further discussion by members of council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, moving on. Consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposition? Now is the time for council member comments. Any council members would like to make a comment?
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of quick announcements. One, I know Councilwoman Ogden mentioned this two weeks ago, but I want to give a big plug, because my kid is in the play. Please, if you can, February 28th, March 1st, March 2nd, March 3rd, the Summit High School is putting on a production, a musical production of Legally Blonde. It's going to be quite the show, as they always do. They do a fantastic job at the high school, and I doubt, I have no doubt that this will be as equally entertaining. So if you haven't been to a high school musical production, you're missing out on it. They really do a fantastic job. So please try and make an effort to go. Tickets are on sale now. Secondly, another plug, on March 2nd, St. Teresa's is having a St. Patrick's Day function. They haven't had this in quite a few years. They are, you can go as an individual, you can buy a table. It's a big fundraiser for the church. So if you do want to have some fun with friends, look for, head out to St. Teresa's on St. Patrick's Day celebration, March 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary.
Thank you, Council President. I have three messages from the library. If you're sad Valentine's Day is over, don't despair. The Course of True Love will be happening by the Hudson Shakespeare Company, Sunday, February 25th at 2:00 p.m., short scenes from Shakespeare's plays. The second thing is Volunteer Fair is Saturday, March 10th from 1:00 to 4:00. Representatives from the 18 organizations around to promote the services for volunteer participation. I encourage everyone to try to make that. And then the last is the Summit Library Foundation fundraiser, which is Sunday, March 25th at 3:00 p.m., performance by jazz vocalist Sarah Partridge.
Thank you. Matt?
Thank you, Council President. I want to say two things. Number one, there's a beautiful flashing crosswalk across DeForest and Norwood, which I know Councilwoman Ogden initiated the work on, and the Public Safety Committee, and the Buildings and Grounds Committee, and the Community Services Committee, all working together, and thank you. It looks great. I used it this evening. Thank you.
Long time coming.
Yeah, it's such a relief. And second, on a more serious note, I want to thank Chief Weck and the police department for having such a great relationship with our citizens. I think we see these mass shootings, we hear that there were signs, and that no one told anyone. And I think, I mean, you know, I'm just so relieved that we have a police department that has such a great relationship with our community that I feel like we can have an excellent dialogue that I believe will keep us safer, and thank you for that.
Steve.
Building on what Councilman Gold said, I was fortunate to do a ride-along with the police on Friday night. It was pretty active, but more importantly, what I saw was an absolutely outstandingly professional, caring police force that, you know, built a lot of community involvement and weren't the rough policemen that everyone says they were. They were proactive and did an outstanding job, including bringing in packages that were left in front of a person's house that we had to secure because their alarm was going off. So good on them. And the other thing, to Public Works, congratulations in that we are recipients of a, the TTF fund or grant, $510,000. That is great news, and that'll be going towards the Pine Grove project coming up. So it's all good news, coming budget, fiscally responsible.
Great. Thank you, Steve.
That's one of the largest grants we've gotten from them. Usually it's around $200,000 or $250,000.
You're exactly right.
Beth.
And I just wanted to note that on February 12th, I had the honor, along with Mayor Radus and Councilmember Bowman, of attending the ribbon cutting for the Celgene facility that was discussed in a prior council meeting in the fall before I even sat on council, because it required some zoning change. But they have just opened a new treatment center that does the immunotherapy manufacturing facility, which is going to do CAR-T therapy. They've been having great results in treating multiple myeloma, and they're now partnering and looking to also do some treatments for lymphona. It was really an eye-opening experience. It was great to see it and to hear from the patients and to see this exciting work that's being done right here in Summit that could really be a game changer for cancer treatment. It's also going to bring a lot of jobs to Summit, and I just wanted to congratulate Celgene on this project. It's really exciting, and it's really great to see something that was talked about last year at council, and to see it actually come to fruition was really exciting and inspiring.
Thank you, Beth. Any other comments? Then let me close with two comments. One, on something that was on our consent agenda, which we approved, which was the authorization for our parking services manager to attend a seminar. And I think it's important for the public to recognize why we did that. Parking, obviously, is a huge issue in our town, and, but parking and the issues around parking are evolving very rapidly, and the changes that are occurring vis-à-vis how one looks at organizing a city and development in the city, issues that we are now going to be confronting, or have been confronting for some time, and will certainly be confronting in depth during the course of this year with redevelopment of the Broad Street corridor. Parking is central to that, and we need to understand what the new thinking is about where the trends are in parking. And one of the things that I've talked to Rita McNanny, our parking services director, is once she goes to this conference, she will come back here to council and report to us about what the findings are from the folks around the country about what's going on, and I think it will help us to inform our decision-making as we go forward. So I just want to put that in. And then secondly, on a more personal note, I want to, obviously, as some of you know, all of you around here know, I personally suffered a great tragic loss in the last couple of weeks, but I want to thank this council, the members of it, the mayor, and the city staff, who have shown me a great deal of love and concern, and I appreciate it from all of you very much. So with that, do I have a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We are closed.